I received no update from John McGee. I think Randy's got all the stuff turned in to him. We're just waiting on a reply. That UTT list, we received one, I think last meeting for kind of the first quarter of this year. I've talked to the clerk. He's still trying to find his way through the office. So I told him that fine, we understand. I'll check back with him later, but he's going to try and find out about the last couple of years worth of citations that have never been processed for. Still not getting drug test results or receiving who's been tested or anything. Town auctions on track for 10:00 AM June 12th. The library and sheriff's office have added some stuff to our sale which will make it easier, plus we can put the advertising cost between the departments. So it doesn't cost at all to us, but the more items are in there, the more crowded it'll draw anyway.
So is a live auction, so it'll be in person?
Yes.
Not online?
Nope.
Down where?
At the town garage, down around there.
Okay.
Yeah, because some of that equipment's not movable. It's being bought as is.
Oh, that's my idea.
And...
Well, 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 Saturday?
Yes, at 10:00 AM.
Cash or money order, or what do you want?
Yeah, it'll be cash, check. And if you do Visa, MasterCard, then they charge 3% because that's what credit cards companies charge you. So you can do anything that way. They'll have a food truck there to keep people there.
Any preview?
Yes, probably on Friday evening before the sale. Like I said, the sheriff's office has an additional 30 handguns that they've given, putting in it. And they'll give me a list of long guns tomorrow so we can...
No ammunition?
No ammunition.
That's okay.
Now, we haven't confiscated any ammunition.
Too bad.
But we got ours last month. Monthless statistics are floating around the table there.
That's just statistics.
Is, be going on medical leave starting next week for six weeks for hernia repairs surgery.
Oh, that's fantastic.
Haven't repaired. It'll be off about six weeks.
Can you move it on your roof?
No.
If you look at that roof, the garage roof drains onto that, plus the west side drains onto that, and so you're getting about many times more water than it should. I think we need to go for bids and find out what it's going to cost to quit. And also put some gutter up there and we'll talk.
Yes, on the front of the building.
Yes.
We...
On the front of the garage?
Yes.
As well as your building maintenance too.
So you did approve last time to get a notice out in the newspaper, and I haven't done that. I haven't sent it out. There's a, but I'm gonna request bids and I'll put them down for them to have them. I don't know what's the reasonable time for return of bids. Before the next meeting, or...
At least two weeks, I'd say. Two to four weeks.
Well, I'll just make it four weeks then. So I'll have them in before that meeting. You guys make a decision then. That's it.
I did have a couple of callbacks on two of the vehicles that were going into sale.
Yeah, those are the towns. Did you find them?
Well, there was the one on that 85, whatever that, I don't know what that vehicle was, a Bronco or something.
Oh, Chevy Blade. It's an old military surplus vehicle. We don't have it. I'll check with Town of Rosedale because at one point, many years ago, they gave it to Town of Rosedale and they never transferred it, never did anything about it. So we got it back and it's been sitting down there. But I think it'll be a good sale.
Should be.
That, it's a three-quarter ton.
One owner.
It's a three-quarter ton diesel blazer.
I don't know. That's what they did with it. It's pretty rough.
I did it in front of town. I'll go ahead and get two batteries in it and get it running so it'll sell more.
Sell, or if there's a program, maybe.
There you go.
And the Dodge trucks are the utility department side, the water department.
Red one?
The old red one and the green one.
Red one or blue?
I'll be in the, I'm sorry, anymore.
You may end up...
I never had, yeah, the agencies I did.
Did run?
Used it.
They both run, but they don't have brakes.
Well, we could just drive slow.
Later, once we have it figured out.
Probably stick your foot.
Yeah.
That or two or three.
I was gonna go again, that purple notice, I would have the information on it, but I was starting to look for the table and we don't have anything on it for a month.
I'll check with Town of Rosedale then and see if they have it.
Before the details on that, how we...
Yeah, I was talking to Nick about it too because I'm not sure that was way before me. And I know it was military surplus and I think we got it from the sheriff's office and...
We think it saw action in the Golik water problem.
Yeah, probably. It's painted black now.
They were driving it when they got Saddam.
Yeah. We can advertise it as that, yeah?
Saddam's truck.
That's all I have.
You're up, Jeff.
Okay. We probably need to send an executive meeting at some point to talk about water distribution license. Cody's here tonight and as part of his training with Troy, he'll probably be attending some order members as he starts working toward his plant operator's license as well. He's also welcome to give input in that kind of thing. Emergency plan for water, we've got that put together. I think there's documents we need signatures on. Randy has a copy of that.
Ah, I had to add it, must have been my email.
That's a requirement for the audit that we have coming up. I think it's IEDM that does the audit, right?
Yeah.
Yep. So if you can get that signed for me, I appreciate it. Next time, one of the things we've picked around, I know a lot of time, are some of our water ordinances. And, you know, we discussed before, we've got a lot of people that do shut offs and turn ons, and shut offs and turn ons, and shut offs and turn ons. And one of our ordinances states that, I don't know, I'll go on.
That we charge.
That we charge.
Yeah.
To do that. And, you know, it seems to be pretty fair. Is that something that we definitely want to continue doing? We just kind of need to get on the same page. I know that...
Have they been charged? Are they just added to the bills?
No.
That's something that has been charged for several years. So I didn't feel comfortable like it was my position to take on that responsibility of something that wasn't being implemented before and then all of a sudden just start charging those people. I felt like it needed to be a conversation that was brought up again.
Maybe they need to force it.
To remind people that this ordinance does exist and just be us.
Why would somebody keep turning it on and off?
Probably Snorrs could be one, or Reynolds Park. I mean...
A lot of the times too, you know, we'll go out and they'll have a leak on the homeowner's side. So it will be requested to go in, turn the water off at the pit. What we normally do is we tell them, hey, by ordinance, you have to install a shut off valve on your side. And, you know...
If they did, it wouldn't be a problem.
Exactly. But if they don't, we can refuse to turn them on. And I think there's even a fine involved for a period of time. So...
Well, it's a good lesson. They have to be about to shut it off, put a valve in while they're shutting off.
But it's kind of like what Randy said, you know, if this is something that we want to do, we'll definitely want to make sure that the public's informed that, hey, that this is an ordinance and this is something that we want to do.
Well, in case of, our employees' time to do that.
Have they already?
As opposed to doing something else. There should be some kind of cost. We haven't sent the letter out yet with the water report, have we?
It will go in the bills this month.
So could we add something in there, say?
We may be able to check and see if there's something. It'd have to be very small and very brief that we can add onto our bill. But like I said, there's very little room on the utility bill.
Or even just put it on a...
A slip, yeah, just something in addition to, yeah.
Make 20 on one page, stick them in.
I would just like for it to be well-known to the public that this has been an ongoing ordinance. Just because simply maybe you haven't ever been charged for it, it is an ongoing ordinance. It's always been an established, so.
Oh gosh, that goes back to mid-2000s.
I don't know. I can see the people looking for the winter and shut it off and turn it back on.
Ninety-two.
Repair, emergency repair.
I don't know if I can set 25 to do that at all.
Been a while.
I don't know how many of those do you get? Probably how many...
The seasonal ones, no, I wasn't charged. They don't have very much.
The seasonal, you mean like...
Preparers?
No, often the fall and back on spring.
May 19.
Will they be able to get that many in for one year?
Ninety-two. We run to people, you know, I go turn it back on, well, it's still ninety. So we go there four or five times.
Do it across the board. If you're gonna do it, then do it across the board. Pass it up?
Yeah.
So going back to the same place four or five times?
Yeah.
I would think I would just send a, send a vison a little bit to actually take care of their issue.
We're not trying to gouge anybody or anything like that. It's just...
Well, it's real.
We'll take you, we'll take you away from some...
Something else.
And it puts a little bit of the caterpillar.
If we get shut off valve in this, well, you do it. You're done.
Yes, yes.
That's simple. Do we have to? It's already an ordinance.
Right, so you don't need one if you're a minty on it.
Okay.
We're just forcing.
Yeah.
I think it's just a matter of, God, somebody owes me $25. Well, I've never charged them.
Westing on it or...
Is this a trip?
What I would say, if somebody wants a motion to do a way rule, the ordinance, they can.
Is this a trip?
Should we just, how about we just ask Randy?
Yeah, because you know, you sand, put it on her face and pray, you can share the heck out of her. And...
Steve asked for $25 trip, turn off and all?
Okay.
Just for the day.
And started acting it, say in July, give me June to get used to.
Well, those four or five times, you shut it back off, you gotta come back and get it.
First of July or something.
I'm not saying you have to wait.
That would be really direct.
Twenty-five.
First of July, I mean, get in a tight...
I guess.
And then suggest that people, you know...
You'd want to put a book in the paper too. That's what I said, and waxing.
But that's, that one is also...
And it'll be in with the bill.
We can't, Randy, too, if people try and turn on water.
That'll be a lot of...
Remind them.
I never go there for a while there.
So bad. I wouldn't even...
There's no wire handle. It didn't broke off, so somebody tried to strongarm that.
I started and then aren't them just going to...
Oh, no, I didn't even think about it because I wouldn't...
No, I don't need to respond. I mean, yeah, I wouldn't.
Okay, so we didn't do anything officially?
No, we're taking care of all that.
We got you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda here for me is I had a, so there's a request for a stop sign at Hughes and Martin on the east side. It's currently a three-way stop with the exception of the east side there on Martin Road.
Coming up the hill.
Coming up the hill. And I told the person that I would look into that and get a little bit of input from you guys on if that's something that we need to do or want to do. I don't know why it's a three-way stop. The only thing I can figure is in the wintertime, in the incline, that was the only thing I could think of is why it's like that. But the person notes that the people come ripping up that hill with pretty good clip.
They do.
And there's a lot of kids and everything out there. So that was the concern.
Okay, you're talking a little, yeah.
Going to the lake.
Yeah.
I mean, coming back to the lake.
There's no stop sign there, is there?
No, it's just three-way.
So we should put one there?
I think so.
And actually, the stop sign is running north and south. We ran quite a bit, so...
Yeah.
Obviously so.
You know.
Can you give a motion? We'll give one of us.
I'll move.
On the favor?
Aye.
No comment.
We, as a management, one of the things in this audit by IEDM, they'll ask for tank inspection and reports and clean outs and things like that. Kind of, you need to do something in that aspect because it has been a while, a very long while since the tanks have been cleaned out.
You cut that down and we can talk.
That's what he talked to us about and he put together a long-term asset management plan. That included, you know, annual inspections, visual inspections and all that kind of stuff. He also threw in maintenance on the, fixing the items that needed fixing on the towers. We talked about potentially adding mixers to the towers and also painting. And it was, you know, pretty salty over a long-term period. But looking at the shorter term and maybe we go back to that, that asset management program here at some point, I'd like to kind of reexamine it.
Yeah, I would too. I thought it was a good proposal. I thought it made sense. Well...
Plan for it.
We have to plan for it. We...
We need to be proactive, right?
There you go.
It'll be worse if we don't plan.
Well, exactly. Some board down the road, you're teaching guys to come up with several hundred thousand or more to do some serious work. So I think we should get the ball rolling on Jeff. We can revisit it and see what we did.
Okay. On short-term fix, and I've got this just kind of as a comparison. I have a quote from CIS, which is a company that Troy has had doing a lot of inspections and clean outs on. So just as comparison to what, you know, Suez has proposed, an inspection through this company is $1,800 per tank. And the washout inspection is $4,500 each tank. Oh, I'm sorry, washout and inspection, they'll shoot us $4,500 for each tank. And that's a big way to be more prepared for reports. This, obviously, isn't going to be get done before the IEDM audit, but I think it's a good time to examine.
If you have a schedule, they'll do it less.
Exactly. Or if you want to go ahead and invite the board and try to get it scheduled as soon as possible. And then work at the other end on the asset long-term management program. We can do that. I just wanted to throw you a couple of options on it.
Did they give us a price for just an inspection to us?
Yeah, they put a, this is just one of the proposals. They're gonna charge us $2,500 a year. The first year would be a washout and inspection. And then the subsequent years would be visual inspections and address anything that needs to be repaired. And again, we can relook at that over the long term. But I'm figuring if you go out four years, you're doing $20,000 with Suez or, you know, $18,000 with this company. But I think you might do a little bit more, bit of that out there of the Suez. But again, we can examine that. I just wanted to provide you with some information.
We have to do it?
Is that it? Consumer issues? Oh, no, I'm just waiting on this one. If...
When's the inspection?
Well, we don't have one scheduled yet.
I am, I agree.
Right, yeah.
And actually, we could probably purchase the inspection that Suez did when they came last year. Proprietary, they won't release that to us because we're not under contract with them. So they would probably charge us some fee if you'd like for me to.
When's done? Do you have it for, I don't, I'll have to see what that costs.
Okay, I can do that.
I'll make sure he doesn't have to come back and do a thorough inspection. Because he made us done a visual, like a quick one over.
Yeah, I'd like to engage that company. We need to have a plan for the future with the water and towers. I can't remember the exact timeframe, but...
Paint was good for several years. Yeah, fifteen to twenty.
They were needing a power washing on the outside for the pitting and reaplication of polyurethane, if I remember correctly. And that was, yeah, five to seven years out on that. Okay. I'll look into Suez to see what it cost them to give you an inspection report at least. Electrical meeting repairs as a result of CT testing. This is a solid one, but I do have the report from Brett and a copy of all the hardware it would take to do each individual.
So what'd they find when they did that? What did they find? Are meters not metering correctly?
Yeah. The list that I emailed you are only for those meters that had significant problems.
Okay.
Which is defined by over 3% differential.
Now, those meters were not spotted out back in 2011. I remember we came in or...
They were switching into electric.
We didn't do the commercial or three phases to complete that process. So we're talking rebuilds or new meters, what we're talking.
No, we're talking, going in and repairing with some new electronic stuff. I don't know.
Right.
Yeah. Brett and Dan can do the work themselves. This is just for the parts that they need to do each individual meter.
We're losing money in each other's accounts in that area.
Yes, by factor of at least 3% periods.
Do you have a motion?
I'll move.
I'll say.
On the favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Because we got money back.
Well, we...
Yeah. Well, it's something that really...
Well, we need it.
Yeah, for sure. All right, street sweeper. From the thrill of victory to the agony of defeat. Poor Alan's been beating his head up on this thing for the last three months, trying to get it going. And in my email that I sent you, you know, we started the thing up and before he did, he checked what we had in freeze in the Kulaq, which is usually indicative of a low-hanging gasp or something. They're pretty significant. A few years ago, you had it rebuilt, I understand. Alan is looking into a few options. Right now, we are going to drive that thing until it blows. Because either way, you're going to have to do a rebuild or buy a new engine, create engine for it or something.
Is something qualified for the lemon law?
I don't know. But keep in mind, it's...
I know that's the one.
It's a 2000 model, it's a 2000 model year. I know you got it a few years ago.
So my answer would be no.
Yeah.
We've done, we, we've spent so much money on this. We had an old one and we just threw money in it.
And you're kind of doing the same.
Well, we're always buying someone else's car. We were used to, well, we got our plenty to pass the hurdle. Oh, we didn't pay much for that one.
No, it was only like, according to Alan, I think it was $12,000 or $15,000 or something. But I'm pretty sure you got close to that.
Well, it did what it cost you.
Oh, huge. Yeah, yeah, they're significant. So if you have any good ideas or direction on what you want to go, want me to do that, we're, we're going to drive it until it blows. Keep changing oil.
We got a group that's getting to it too.
We do. I have a collection group. It doesn't hold a lot. I'd have to pretty much have a dump truck follow me around so that as I go down through, gets full, I have to continue on. So I mean, it's, it's not critical. It's just, boy, I think when it does work, it saves us a lot of time.
Other towns have so much trouble.
I'm sure they do. Unless they just go out and buy a new crate off every year.
It's a little cute.
Anyway, I just wanted to let you know what was going on with that so you can be thinking about what we need to do. Again, I'll try to give you some different options.
Hey, somebody, want to see if there's a crate?
Street sweeper.
There he is. Fine, yeah, okay.
Are they green?
We met or how? Or we got found stranger than... Means we're probably buying it through South Africa or something.
Well, I don't know if there's some lease programs out there available. That's what I'm going to kind of look into. Financing or leasing. Also, this one came in late and this was a bill for alum supply for wastewater treatment plant, $4,359.50. And that is an annual expense. We've already got it. It came in. I didn't get approved ahead of time, so I better shoot that past you.
So I'll move.
Who's it for?
Wastewater treatment.
Company?
Uh, I'll pull them out. I've got your... Water Solutions is correct.
Okay, it is alum.
Alum, alum, oh, okay, that's for the...
Prosper.
Yeah. Were you gonna say it?
I think I did.
On the favor?
Aye.
I did have more than that. I'm right. I sent you some little partial excavating or patching email, various things.
I saw one on Howard. Is it another location?
Howard Street.
Yeah.
Howard, we did that. Work there. If we want to go in and remail that. I also put, let's see, Indiana Street, what it would cost, pretty popular, that end. I think that was 10 grand.
People are fussing about that street a lot.
Yeah, that's why I thought I'd go ahead and get a quick quote on it.
Indiana?
Just the water or what?
No, it's just, it's a mess.
Was that the one that you?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah.
So, anyway.
I don't know why you're doing, it's never been done because it doesn't get a lot of traffic.
Yeah, I don't know. Because it dead ends, but still, it's a mess. And realize that. So I figured I'd throw those numbers at you. If we, depending on what happens with our community crossings, we may have a little wiggle room for one or two. We'll see. So I just wanted to present that to you. Any others?
What about the sidewalk on College? I added that for you. I have just a request. If you can check that sidewalk there, that address on College Street, please. And see what's going on there. I know the last meeting you mentioned that Harvey guy about touching the sidewalk. That looks like a similar situation or off, but if you could just check it out and see what's going on over there.
I will.
Is it? Oh. Well, she said something to me and I said, you could help. She can't imagine that.
All right, yes, I'll look at that. Thank you.
Thanks. Ready?
Can I get a motion on this for her?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I heard it's a continuous.
I'll move.
On the favor?
Aye.
Now, you can go, Randy.
All right, you've got planes and the amount of 168, 582, 17.
Three basically, payroll.
I don't like to tell them, we can do thousands of all of these, but...
I'll move three planes.
Hold it.
On the favor?
Aye.
All right.
I guess we don't have to bring that other one on that. We just moved on to... April bank reps, they're all balanced to zero. There's all the spreadsheets in there.
Move through the cover, right?
Send me a move.
On the favor?
Building adjustments, $240.13. Most of them were just leaks, small minimal leaks. Had a couple leaks on the town side of things that we had to do. $362 adjustment that was on our side. Other than that, people do have prepared bills of statements where they've Other than that, people do have per capita bills of statements where they either hire somebody or purchase their own equipment to fix.
Move approved adjustments.
On favor?
Aye.
I have resolution for the electric, to electric cash reserve. I was going to ask you about that. You just wanted the hundred thousand dollars to build up that reserve, right?
Right.
Have that ready to.
Yeah, we have cash flow to do it and cash reserves. We have like four hundred thousand, hundred million down. I brought twenty out last year. That could be enough to hide your loan from one you split to the other cash reserve as opposed to non-cash reserve loans in here. So it seems like it's a good thing to have. We can actually need to have more some future.
You'd agree to add that and some other.
It would. Yeah, yes, I moved approved that.
So that's just moving a hundred thousand from the light cash, or from the light department fund to our cash reserve.
I'll move to reserve.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Um, I was given a couch trial on some acreage from Rose Farms. I don't know all the details about that, but I did talk to Nick about what other information you want to do some type of short term court agreement of some sort.
Well, I mean, I can't make a motion, but I guess my suggestion would be that the board just allow me to talk to Roses directly.
Okay.
See what.
Something up, because I don't have any.
Wanted to know before, then he just wrote something on it.
Yeah. Do you have a contact with him then?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll shoot, I'll shoot you.
No, I'm kind of, well, oh, you want that.
For motion.
For you to talk to. This is what I think.
On favor? Yeah. Yeah, a little more formal.
Okay.
That's what we're doing there. Although I do like it.
We could have you in maybe two days.
Four acres.
Four acres.
Two hundred acre per year. But I would say we need to do it every fall for the following year.
Just have it renew or do you want to have it?
It should always be renewed by the end of the year.
I would suggest that we revisit that in the fall because depending on what Department of Homeland Security, if we're able to get that, it may significantly reduce what they're able to farm. This improvement may help. They may not be able to farm anything there if it goes all the way out to most of the property.
What's that mean?
Department of Homeland Security, brim of fencing for water wells.
Ah, okay.
Our part.
Yes.
Facial line?
Yeah.
Two thirty percent.
So I have on here the community hall, a rental invoice lady who told me that we've kind of taken care of that initially on our behalf.
Yeah.
We may have something further, but.
I'm, you're the things builder. It's a long term deal and it's been invoiced for, so we'll get that first with the commissioners. Like us to continue. They have offered us another month some to go through the end of the year. However, we will not do nearly as many days or hours. It would be a Tuesday, Thursday, probably not. It's just for testing, total of ten. And since all of our stuff is already there and set up, it would be helpful. But we will have an amount that I think we should come up with and obviously, I guess I should have said since I'm in the string of grant. And invoice him, but if you could come up with a monthly amount you would like to get for say loss revenue, utilities, that type of thing. Please feel free to do so. We'll have a fifty thousand.
I was going to look at utilizing it as a vaccination.
That's a whole other story. There are some things in the works that they're trying to get done. Perhaps at some point establish an actual location so that everything will be administered by the nurse at a, at a, at one location.
I got you.
So we are, the plan is to tentatively continue vaccinating either at the at the ambulance service. Or we may try to sell portion of detectors. So we will be continuing those as well.
Who's doing the testing at the?
Through the end of June, it will be, continue to be.
You.
You.
In the afternoon.
The nurse will be doing it. With some continued help from EMS. But the number that we're doing has declined so significantly that we think the nurse will probably do it. And we'll probably keep the, maybe one other person, keep the hours. It's Wednesdays and Fridays right now. The Wednesdays is twelve to six and the Fridays is.
How many, how many people are you doing on like a day?
Our Las Vegas day, I think we did three hundred and some, but we're averaging, I think last Wednesday they did sixty.
Sixty, still testing sixty.
No, not testing. I thought you did.
No.
No, testing, probably a good day is five.
And we, do we really want to rent a building?
I do, as given a directive that that was not my decision. Commissioners want us to continue doing that. If we don't want it down there, we'll have to try to secure it. The ambulance service does not want it there. And we don't know that I'd be technically available since he's trying to stay to the percent. But that's obviously.
But for five people, can't you do it at the health department?
We talked about trying to have it, it could be a drive up, but she's going to have to go from into, try to find somewhere in the town. I would have to come into town and request that we designate two spots for testing.
It just seems like a lot for just a couple of people a day.
The ambulance service is owned and run by the county. The county's wanting to test. Do you want to rent our building for us?
I don't know. I don't think Tuesdays and Thursdays are utilized. I mean, it's basically easy money.
Do you expect secure?
All right.
Okay. Moving on to the.
I kind of need an answer because I have.
I'm sorry.
Well, I'm okay with it. I mean, I don't think there's any better alternative. Does he need Dick to do something?
I need somebody to come up with an amount you would like.
Oh, well, what have we been getting?
There's going to be a lump sum payment of five thousand dollars.
That's from county.
Eight.
Eight. Go primary.
Six.
Okay.
And we've got
It's going to be roughly, what, sixty, sixty percent reduction in amount of time spent there.
Yeah.
Well, right now, we're doing fifteen hours and we'll drop down to about ten with any opinion.
So we're.
We're only about five thousand for the first eight months?
No. And the rest went to.
I'm sure it'll cost pretty much great.
So.
Six twenty-five a month?
You got a number.
Some of that money will have to go to the nurses.
Roughly four hundred a month. If you, maybe somebody third.
Six twenty-one.
For two days.
And what'd you say about the nurse? She will be there. She is going. The anticipation is that her hours will be cut back to the original fifteen at the end of June. That seems to be the consensus that that's what the council would like based on the drop off in corny testing. And so she is looking for ways to second her account. She has volunteered to be responsible.
For about ten hours.
What do you normally charge to rent out the clinic per day or, or the building per day for an hour?
A bunch.
A day.
So I think twenty-four, five hundred would be nice.
Well, I mean, if it's fifty dollars a day and you have two days a week, that's going to be about four hundred a month.
Plus it's been twenty-five hundred dollars, you know?
Like renew the MOU.
There you go.
One seven or twenty-five hundred. To be paid, you want me to have it paid four hundred dollars a month, you can invoice me for that a month. Once the money comes, because that's the next hurdle is that these are not the money that doesn't always come when you sign the contract. Like the one for the test site opened on October eighth. And we got our money in March.
Doesn't sound like the government at all.
No.
Not ours.
What could possibly happen? So if you are, can be patient.
Will that be July for the minute here as of right now?
Yes.
Who was in all those rental fees?
Okay.
All right, thank you. Okay, so I just have an amendment to the salary ordinance. As far as the pool is concerned, made some changes to manager salary, eliminated assistant manager salary. We have three guards and some part-time money. Basically, we have five slots for guards now. And then what extra fifteen hundred dollars is in the part-time guard? The money is still the same dollar amount that was on the original ordinance within the pool. It's just divided a little bit differently. So like, you would have eight here and two for assistant. You would have one, two, three guards. And then there was two concession bars that we eliminated. So pending dollar amount is still the twenty-five thousand. It's just broken up a little bit differently. Means that we do have five guards on hand now. And it looks like we'll have one, if not two, that we can fill in using the part-time money if we need to. If we don't, we'll encumber it. But, so there's no change in dollar, just a change in.
Allocation.
Yes. My question.
I'll say.
On favor?
Aye.
You're busy. I need to get that job description, MOU and.
And the only other thing I had just that came in was on you, Max. If you want to present or discuss or anything on your contract.
Yeah, our contract was out in April. And we just kind of, which is kept the same, but for the water, we just, two year again, probably just wanted, we just didn't hear about the drinking water in anticipation that Cody will be taking over. And I think he's capable of doing. But we just wanted to see if we could get something signed.
I already angled something right.
No, we, that was always the plan, you know, we started. And I think he's come along with it. No, we're working with him.
Sounds like he's like at the top gun level. Could pass the first call.
That's pretty good.
What were we paying the four in sewer park? They say.
We didn't change it.
Doesn't change. Have you heard about the inflation out there?
I think, I think so much we like working with.
You guys don't get much timber.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. Unlike some of our sewers, they don't generally use. Would we have to look for it?
Well, I move to prove.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Their danger shot first.
Will you sign, oh, you weren't here. Were you from? Were you from last meeting?
I was.
Not here last meeting. There's statements here, but will you sign on that blue, or that blue one tomorrow? It was last meeting, it was approved. I just didn't see that. It was a signature spot, yes.
Anything else? Eddie, you want to say, Cody?
Now's your time, Eddie, on to talk about, okay? This is it.
I will go back to that tower thing one more time. So I spoke to Cody's last day. He did not, he just did a visual on that. He didn't drain it to get a real good expansion. So really look at that. I'm not saying it's a bad, we've worked with those guys on other places. They did a really good job. But they can also stick it to you too, so just be careful. Just give a press to do it. Because inspection should be like fifty pages long. It should be structural, paint inside out, drain it down and all that.
You guys want to hear that?
I'm scared.
No, you have to actually get inside the tower to do that.
Yeah, you do. You get in there and ask them. But you get, you go down the.
How do you get you up there in the heartbeat? You might love it in eight eleven.
Yeah. I'm scared.
I'm not falling. Falling for them.
I get them so wider.
I don't know whatever, then I'm afraid to come down.
Do you have anything, Cindy?
Yes, just one quick thing. Last meeting, you asked me to pursue getting a quote for the income survey for water users. There's a wave down getting, getting that quote for me, so I don't have that. But I'm trying to come up with something if, if I could put some hours towards, I'll let you guys get that done. Just tackle it, but just wanted to give you that update. And then Jeff, did you get any response on if we're going to Zoom meeting with structure point on the, we just need to. So the forty-one north, where they have that change, that new construction and thing that, right?
Right, that is the thing. Yeah, that's a good thing to put that or point out. I think I shared that email with you guys and asked for a little bit of info. On the forty-one north, evidently one of the things that was originally specked out was rerouting some of the sewage flow directly to the wastewater plant.
So, yeah, on Pennsylvania, wasn't it?
Yeah, I think so. And given the fact that I think New Wave grew up, put that building in there, changed ownership between prop, it was going to be a significant.
To work around it.
On the forty-one north sewer project.
Well, yeah, but you mentioned New Wave.
Yeah. About, we were, part of the route would go right through the old railroad right away, which is now the.
Oh.
Yeah, and where they put that, so they would have to redo a new route. And Brian indicated that it's not impossible, but it may not be worth it.
Substantial change order and redevelopment really didn't.
And it was originally specked, it's just an option anyway.
And it's more of a like auxiliary part and it wasn't, it was required.
But I think they're sitting on it until you guys give the.
They're all designed now.
I'll let Brian know that we're going to pass.
Well, we had associated a thousand plus design. For a million dollar, you made more project or well, more.
So while you're on that, then the other email that went out about the, the plaintiffs wanting the tap on in lieu of the purchase for the easement, did you guys see that? They, I guess that was sent out.
I'm okay.
Yeah, it was earlier today.
That's a fair trade.
No, that's all. I just didn't know if you guys have seen that or not. You know, if the town's willing, I, I have somebody else.
Right away, I don't get with that.
Okay. Do you want me to respond or do you want Jeff to respond or who do you want to respond?
I haven't seen you.
All right, I'll respond then. Okay.
So Cindy, on you.
He is in town though, isn't he?
Do you have anything else you would like?
The plaintiff. I don't know what they are.
On the.
It's.
Don't we have an organs that we have?
No, I don't think he's.
Yeah.
He's right.
Does it work?
Correct.
So we use that Jack building, we just sit there five years, you have a lot.
Well, if parking already exists, which there are about.
We do have.
No, I just think there's ten there, but there's at least five on the south side of the road.
We're going to have to purchase these.
If parking already exists and you just demo the building, you can still use that parking. You can't. You have to grasp. If perking already exists and you just demo the building, you can still use that perking, which you can't, you have to grasp the rest for five years. Well, Nick and I met, we had our first meeting, so he had a couple other commercial...
He's wanted to gift a right away to us in exchange for...
And the conversation was that the town had already talked about putting money towards the debt. But would you rather take that money and do something else with another structure and still pursue the grant? Either take that money you had there, use it somewhere else and use the grant. But if you're, isn't gonna be getting perking more quickly, then you will not want to do the...
Well, that's kind of what I thought. Okay, so I guess I'm just, could you lighten this, I'm sorry, can I use that with the fellow from the owns, that has the OMB building?
Yes.
How'd that go, any of the thing you want to share with us?
Well, let me, let me, let me put the story to highness, so people don't get the wrong, the wrong idea. So, the company that owns the building where Old National Bank was, that's HJH Investments. They hired a Realtor, a commercial Realtor, to represent them and to market the building. So, the Realtor and a representative from HJH came into town last week and asked me to get together, you know, a couple of groups Tuesday and Wednesday afternoon and take through their tour, especially if they haven't seen it. But the other thing was to get ideas from the community about what they felt was a good fit for that location. You know, single tenant, multi-tenant, what to do with the upstairs, the residential piece. Bank, restaurant, different ideas. So, we had those discussions. One person that visited said, I already know somebody that wants to buy it, so they passed along that information. We did have, a local business was one of the visits, and they did a very thorough look-through of the building. More for corporate office relocation for them. So, I will say there was, there was more interest than I anticipated.
Yeah.
And so I'm hoping that the real estate broker is aggressive in marketing.
Corporate office would be nice. I mean, honestly, bank branches are just gonna keep disappearing in the country, I can't see that.
Yeah, there was one person visiting that brought up a bank that's in Paris, Illinois called Good Neighbor. Yeah, I think it's what it's called. They've started doing business with them over the last several months and have been extremely impressed with them. So even though their business is here, they have a machine at their desk to process their business checks to deposit. And so the only thing that they're keeping, local announcer cash. But, that was one bank branch I'd never heard of, but there was some real interest in buying other people in the group, but, I mean, of course, the upstairs not. We found a calendar from 1972, so you can tell how long it's been since the upstairs has really been touched. There's only two floors, the rebuild was only two floors.
Is it safe in the basement?
Yes.
Around safe?
Yes. There's also a big vault safe, there's, there's a whole, there's several, there's actually a safe on the second floor too. But anyway, we hope that there's some interest. They bought it. The investment group bought it for 1.67, with the anticipation with being a bank is a tenant, a long-term tenant, and so they were quite shocked when, when Old National went down. That lease is good until October 22. OMB is still paying rent until October 22. That's what happened. Yes. They actually had dehumidifiers running in the basement. And they don't call it mold, they call it sustaining.
That's aggressive.
Yes. There's some sustaining.
Ah, just painting.
Special plans, make sure.
Does that conclude our evening? I forgot all about you, man.
I don't want to ruin our time. Just a couple things, we already talked about DePlante, I know the answer to that. Just update, Officer Cerny's trial is now set for August 15th for a full-day bench trial. So, and that's a first-place setting, so it ought to be tried that day. Our last hearing, I told you, we had a long-lost utility customer that we were having a hearing on. We got a judgment in our favor at the hearing for the amount we asked for. I set a follow-up hearing for June while he was still in jail, so he's ordered to appear, so if he doesn't appear, we can have a warrant. What happens with the judgment creditors, if you get a judgment, they have 30 days to pay. If they don't pay, you can have what's called a hearing supplemental, where you can ask them a bunch of questions under oath about the finances. So that'll take place in June. But we do have good service on him now, so I intend to keep hearing dates going until we get paid, so. Those are the main things I had, there's other things, but nothing important.
IMPA?
IMPA, I have not talked to IMPA.
I talked, tried to talk to Dwayne Richardson supposedly IMEA as a mutual aid plan. But he, I left the voicemail, called again, he won't return a call to tell me about the mutual aid plan. I've talked to a few utilities that belong to this IMEA, our size, and none of them are going to be with IMPA.
With IMEA or IMPA?
IMEA is the utility group, IMPA provides the service to us. Some of them are doing it themselves, some of them hire an outside contractor to come in and do work. I haven't got through all of them, the smaller size groups, but...
What reality is, the type of situation and contract we have with IMPA, I mean, if there's a major issue or storm to an area, you're not gonna, even when there's not a storm, they have the projects, right? You're never gonna get the ideal situation, I mean, that's, that's a kid.
No, I don't think so, but we're spending...
We can find something better, I'm all for it, but I don't know what it is.
Well, I don't know either, that's why I've been talking to a few to see what they're doing.
Well, I'm not surprised your others aren't satisfied, because this is not good satisfied.
And one group I talked to bought their power out of Ohio instead of IMPA because they thought they got a better deal. But, we're kind of tied into that forever.
None of us are.
What's the danger, Parnes? I plan to be here in 50.
In spirit or in...
But now, with them, I guess I just need clarity, what is I'm asking of them? Because we already asked to change it, and they clearly just bold-faced said no. So I mean, what am I going back to them with? Change it or we're not signing it, or...
But would you help us out for another seven months?
I guess that's my question to you, is what am I saying back to them? I mean, at this point, I said make these changes, they said no.
Well, I'd suggest we decide what we're gonna do before the seven months is up. I can't imagine them just staying since we're...
Right, I mean, they're still working month-to-month paying us right now. That's not terribly bad for us necessarily, but unless they decide they're not gonna...
But we've got a lot of poles to replace as part of the service agreement. Yeah, I mean, they're not gonna come in and replace poles. We're still paying them.
Well, I don't know that long-term, that's a very solution, I don't mean, I don't know, we've tried. I mean, for the rest of this year, I think much aside our thing and get over it, maybe it's worked good.
Now, are we continuing to be locked in, or we still have to give them a year to bail?
I'd have to reread it, it had like a notice period, I thought it was 90 days.
Yeah, it's not a year. It's not a year.
Well, I thought we gave them a year's notice.
We did.
But that was the old one. Yeah, but this one, I told them I didn't want a year's notice, and they gave us a short. What I would say is that we change the notice period to this, whatever we want to.
30 days.
30 days notice on this show here, right?
Yeah, I think when you get signed, it gets more done, I mean, season's upon us, it gets a good...
Man, I mean, before you know it, you're gonna be back at the, we need to sign a contract again, and, so I mean, we need a long-term. Either we're going within long-term and we're just gonna be...
Where's that contract at?
I don't have it with me.
Mark, Japanese new executive session?
Oh, it's probably...
We need to...
That's what we need to say.
Yeah.
Yeah, in the meantime. I'll work at them. Alrighty, that help you?
Yeah, just looking to see if I had it on my email or not. Looks like I do.
So Brandy and I were talking about that, turning it off the ground for roses. And apparently Jeffrey's farms, two other, it's called Rockfield Five, Rockfield Seven. Where are those at?
I don't remember, I remember they had us a green volume.
Yeah, they, it's the one that applies to...
Seems like it's green though.
Yeah, well, no, we, we pay, we take our...
A by-prem?
Yeah, our stinky stuff.
Our non, no, non, non...
Contaminated.
Better name. Better days. I like that standard, we gotta give them a...
Blackwater, is it?
Spread.
Gray water.
It's a spread.
Gray water is the...
Spread, that sounds like food.
It's a dark spread, kind of like Nutella.
You got a setup executive for...
Yeah, we need exactly what we need, what we need, when.
Just want to do it before or after the next meeting?
Well, before next, well, I mean...
We, we have the next meeting in two weeks, come for two or three weeks.
Is next Monday the only Monday we don't have a meeting with you?
Well, we have next Monday, that's point four, the following Monday.
I only have one Monday month.
So three weeks from tonight, we'll be back here, but executive session before 5:00 PM will be difficult, right?
Yeah, well, we'll just have the executive session after a regular session.
Well, we can do that, one, we'll be here, so we can lock the door and keep everybody from...
So just dismiss everybody, lock it out.
And we just outlined for first 15 minutes of the meeting's executive session? This one is...
Yeah, I'm sure we'll have more. Okay, let's just do it after the regular meeting, you think that, Brandy?
Nope.
What about...
Todd's still thinking about how the first...
We're setting executive session to follow our next regular meeting. Which will be what, June 7?
7, June 7.
And there'll be an empty desk for sure. Not quite yet, June, July.
You good?
I'm waiting for decent weekend.
Oh, I'm fine, it's up to you guys on whether you want to do that agreement with IMPA or not, and she has it.
Well, I agree apart, let's just sign it on the business.
Get on the year and come up with maybe a better stat.
I'm good. All favor?
Aye.
Where's the darn thing at?
I'm sorry, I did not, I thought you...
This thing's pretty much losing.
I know, I didn't...
I'll just vote now, just on press. I don't like being, giving away my rights, I don't like that.
Well, there's also reality of...
Well, you've got enough to carry, so I'm, I'm going. Some things I just won't...
You are good.
How dare you?
Probably have problems that to pick.
I don't think my voting no is the problem with the government.
I was gonna say, Dave, our redevelopment commission will meet May 25th.
They are meeting?
Yes, we have to have some reports and a resolution passed, check for me.
I had a question mark there, saying they are meeting, that's at 6:00?
I sent an email invite, just helped bring it over today.
Okay, I haven't checked the email.
Just wanted you to mention your calendar, so we got it.
That's good, you did it. There's a section on there where you can, does not show, correct?
I have not, when is their next meeting?
No, I've got one year 26.
You want me to come teach you guys how to do your Microsoft...
She sent a flyer out to me to African.
Then you and him had it.
No, you showed me.
So they filled four dumpsters, is that correct?
Oh crap, I got a problem that day.
Crayon before.
I was gone every single time.
Why?
Town seems cleaner.
Seems cleaner?
You can't do it?
Hey.
What?
Okay, I'm trying, my heart, I promise.
Oh. Yeah. Oh, I have a trip parade. Went down to Arkansas. Beautiful, unbelievable, man, it's, it's not, it's beautiful, and the pasture, clean cow, the big, pretty building, cows all over, and the trees here and there, it's just absolutely... I'd like to check it out. Arkansas, just south of Paris.
Good, it's a little bit of our city, is that place still there?
I don't know, it's still there, no, we were strictly, we were out hitting antique models on...
Did they bring anything back?
We had our pack. Better gas models, six, maybe over 50 showers.
Is this a business trip?
It pretty much turned into that, we didn't think we could do this.
So it's still there. I don't have a book.
We were down by the brakes. All salaries and technical pieces, we didn't see the files.
Park made...
We lied to you, you said you were going to rank to it. Why was it ranked?
You said it though.
Yes.
Cena?
Pardon me? You were...
I do not sign away my rights, on the advice of my counsel, all of my counsel.
All of your counsel.
How many do you need?
I have several.
Jeez.
You have no idea.
We can't tell you anything she's done, that's what she's...
Okay. I'll say it.